This is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Gewin with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Gewin and Fayette.
Hello, I'm Keith Nichols with Marion County Funeral Home. I'm here with our manager Glenda Cochran and owners Rick and Jane Chambliss. It has always been our purpose to provide the most caring and compassionate service we can at the most reasonable prices. So we feel it imperative to offer a pre-need option that will fit the needs of the people and area we serve. So why should we pre-plan? To make sure your wishes are met, provide peace of mind for you and your family, to relieve hurried and impulsive decisions at one of the most difficult times in our lives, to also relieve a great financial burden on our family. We plan for a number of things in our lives, so let's not forget one of the most important, our final arrangements. For a limited time, we're offering your choice of a $6,495 service or a $6,995 service. We're here because we care, so give us the opportunity to sit down and answer any questions you might have regarding pre-planning and the services we provide at Marion County Funeral Home in Hamilton, 921-5777, and follow us on Facebook.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gewin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Hey guys, this is Nick Jackson at New Heights Church in Hamilton, Alabama. I just wanted to extend to you an invitation to come check out one of our services. We start at 11:00 a.m. on Sunday mornings and 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday night. We're all about abiding, arming, and awakening. Also, we have a nursery ministry and a children's ministry as well as functional on those Sundays. Our youth gather together on Wednesdays. Come on out and see what it's all about. We'd love to have you.
Hamilton Metal Roofing located at 291 County Highway 25 in Hamilton. We sell 29 and 26 gauge roof metal. We have all types of trim and screws for you to complete your projects. Call us with any questions, open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Call us at 205-921-7100.
Your story starts at Beville State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Beville State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Lord, I want to thank you for another day, another day of life that you've given us. And Father, I just pray that you'd be with us in this meeting today. Father, may we think something of things that we say and do be in accordance to your will and be what's best for our constituents of Marion County for a better community, better growth, and everybody would prosper. Lord, I pray you'd forgive us for what we failed you for, in my name I pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I feel warmth coming out of my mouth. I need a recommendation approved minutes of July 7, 2025.
I'll make a motion.
Sir.
All in favor? Recommendation approved that counts payable. Motion in a second.
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor? Recommendation approved Declaration of Emergencies, expenditure for County Highway 11 to pay expenses from secondary road fund. Chris, you want to sort of elaborate on all this?
Sure. So we had an emergency situation pop up on a section of one of our major collector roads, which was County Road 11 in District 2. We had a sinkhole that came up on the shoulder underneath the guardrail over a section of culvert. And, you know, we tried to, District 2 forces tried to alleviate the concern, but it just kept washing out. And so we thought that it was going to be an issue, so we wanted to address it pretty quick. So we closed that section of roadway and Kenneth's crew was able to dig it out and have it replaced. But it was closed for about two weeks there. And so what I'm bringing this to you for is, we want to consider this an emergency-type expenditure. And in this case, be able to reimburse District 2's account for the labor, the equipment, and the materials that was needed for that specific project since it was considered an emergency situation.
Did we years ago, if we're not, you might remember this, did we not, probably five or six years ago, we talked about setting up an account for emergencies like this? Did we ever do that?
Not to my knowledge.
We probably need to look at doing that because this is what, second time this has ever happened.
Yeah, Dale had one.
The best three years ago, there was an issue there.
We probably need to, I don't know how much money, but how Scott the budgeted and let's vote and set up some emergency fund like that where we'll have the money to do it and won't have to take it out of a fund if we do it out of the general fund.
Right. I think it probably still needs to be voted on though.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I'm just saying in the future, if we can have an account, $50,000 or $100,000 account set up, and if something comes up on any district load like that, like 32 we gone up there, 4 we gone on beat.
Yeah, if we wouldn't have had the alcohol money for that, yeah, we would have been in the same situation, yeah.
I agree with you.
So the total that I have for labor, equipment, and materials is going to be $36,879.47. And so we'll, like Chris Nergunian said, we'll take it out of secondary road fund and transfer it back into District 2's account as reimbursement.
What was that total? I need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? And on that issue, I'm like Keith, I think we need to, when we do our budget this year, just set up an account, whether it be $50,000 or $100,000. And if we have an emergency come up in any district, you know, we can use that fund and then we all need to, we all need to vote on it. You need to submit it to us just like what you did, so what we can all vote on.
Keith, if we set up a fund or when we do, we can take part of the money out of secondary? Can we take part of it out of another account?
Secondary road or the 4-cent, triple R account, either one, they both operate similar, and so it can all be.
Containing to road.
Yeah.
We could do $100,000, take out of all three of them, not hurt none of them.
Right.
Thank you.
Next, recommendation approved transfer of school bus parked a lot in Marion County, ranked by airport to Marion County Board of Education in exchange for the craft school property. And there have been a lot of issues going on up there, and I sort of know a lot about what's going on, and Tim knows a little bit about what's going on. And anyway, Board of Education owns the property that we vote on at Craft. And there's a fire department up there, and there's a walking track up there. And me and Scott met with him, I don't know, probably been three months ago, to try to figure out, they're wanting to add on to the fire department, but they don't own the land, Board of Education does. We're trying to figure out some way that they could get the land and, you know, us have the voting building and stuff like this. So Scott's been in contact with Board of Education. We have a little, it's around acre land or more there where they park the school buses at Board of Education, and it's 4.7 acres up out of Craft, so we're wanting to do a swap.
And the property up there belongs to the school board, but the county has had a lease on it for, since 2016, I think was the last lease. And then we have turned around and leased it to the fire association. So the fire association needs it in their name before they can, I took it, borrowed money or get it grant, add on to their fire station.
Are we going to turn around and sell the property to them or tell them to them before they have? We'll probably, as far as just where the fire department is, we'll probably donate that land to the fire department. The land for the, the walking tracks and the building itself will probably, probably a board be appointed to operate and see over that. The only time we'll need it is just for voting.
What me and Greg and Scott talked about, or me and Scott, him and Greg that I talked about, was distant. Myself or Greg, we want to be in the business of owning a building and people won't become leasing. If everybody's good, I'm good with just the fire association handling it, them set up a board and run it and take care of it. And they will assume all fire bills and things we've been paying, but it will be wrote up before we still get it as a voting building free of charge.
Right now, we're having to pay all utilities, all the insurance, all the other thing. And at this point, you know, we'd sort of lift all that and we'd pass that responsibility down to them.
But we would still use it free of charge as a voting building.
I need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor? Recommendation approved Daniel Design Studios in Lee Berry Engineering bidding on base bid, second floor alternate, one, third floor and alternate, to Marion County Courthouse. When we had a work session Wednesday, Scott addressed some of the issues, we had problems with our air conditioners. We had a problem Friday, fourth last, where everyone went out. It's an old system, but we have had this engineering firm coming in to sort of give us pricing on putting the new air conditioner systems in that was purchased by the previous commission. And we want to sort of try to address the second and third floor first. And so Scott, I think, is going to put these out for bids, and I think we just need to vote on where he can move forward and do this and see how it comes in. I know the primary number was pretty soft, we just need to bid this thing back out and see where it comes in and get started on. I need a motion in a second too.
I'll make a motion.
I need a second.
Sir.
All in favor? Next, recommendation approved purchase of John Deere loader from Department of Transportation for District 5. Larry, you want to elaborate a little bit on this?
I've been waiting on that for two years. They finally got their replacement, and it's a 2016 524K with just a little over $2,000 on it. And then I'm now the user to show the little drugs on the ground.
I need a motion in a second approved to purchase this.
I'll make a motion in a second.
All in favor? And next, is a recommendation approved along with State Banking Trust to purchase of that loader for $65,475 with three annual payments. And then a motion in a second approved.
I'll make a motion. In a second.
All in favor? Recommendation to hire Brody Pendley on solid waste at 1375 with a start date of July 28, 2025. Chris, you want to elaborate a little bit on this?
He will be taking the spot of another employee that had left. He's unlicensed, no C D L license, so that's why we'll start him at 1375. The plan is to work him through the summer, then this fall, send him to school to get his C D Ls along with a couple others that we got.
How many would this put you now on solid waste? We give you a backup, I know you've had, you've had two or three to leave, haven't you in the last?
Yes, sir. So that, this will still leave me about one short from where I want to be, just give me nine, which is better than eight, because if it takes eight to run it, somebody misses, then, you know, there I am, having to put Lance out there. So this will give me at least one extra in case somebody misses or a suit. But, yeah, I'd like to at least have one more.
Is this a young boy?
Yeah, he's early twenties.
Is he interested in getting his C D L?
Oh, yes. He asked me if he needed to get him before he came to work. I told him, you know, obviously that won't help, but we'll have to get him once he gets here. So I think he'll be a good hire for us.
I need a motion in a second. Make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I'm going to note about the hires. Excuse me. Lisa was telling me up here the other day that we've had some that have started to work before they came in in a timely manner, for her to get them signed up, and that's a big liability on us, especially with the solid waste in our district. Somebody get hurt and them not on payroll.
Well, me and Scott had talked about that from now on. Anybody that we hire don't need to come to work until we vote on it and paperwork's done to prevent, you know, things from happening. So just make sure, Chris, that he comes up and does all this paperwork and stuff.
Okay. I'll get it come Monday.
Number 10, recommendation cancel contract for cleaning the Advent Office Courthouse and Annex as of September the 30th. Kenneth, you want to elaborate on this? Scott said he was, he wanted to.
We've got employees, I know the contract's been up for a while, but I don't know exactly what the actual contract says. It's supposed to be cleaned, nobody can find it. So I told them, have another contract wrote up, and some of the employees, give them a shot, they want to clean the Annex over courthouse, if they can make it, if they can clean it, we just have to go from there, because I don't know what the actual contract.
Well, just have Scott draw the contract on what needs to be done. And, I mean, I know we can give employees opportunity for the week, I'm sure, I wish Scott could have been here, but I'm sure we'll have to probably bid some of that out until we start them out.
Yeah, we're going to get taken on you, but they can bid on it.
I need, I guess, a recommendation in a second.
I'll make a motion to, then that contract's done, expired anyway, I mean, I'll make a motion to cancel it.
Second.
All in favor? Anybody got anything else for us? You got anything?
No, sir, not really. Just trying to stay busy. I am working on some stuff with the safety, with the safety department. We've got a countywide safety committee meeting coming up. You know, I think in the past, we've had one where all the employees have come together, not just the committee, but everybody. I talked with Commissioner Estes, we think we can get that catered and paid for, that 'll probably be later in the summer. And then we're working on ironing out the details on drug testing. So that's kind of what we're doing, working on a couple grant projects with the Sheriff's Department. I think he decided Friday we're moving forward with the TESR program, so I think that'll be good for everybody. Other than that, it's just been super hot and awful.
Russ, are we still doing the same company, still doing the drug testing?
No, sir. He moved back to Tennessee. So that's what the biggest delay has been for me, is I've talked to the guy that used to do it, and then I guess it's kind of y'all's desire. The least investment from a financial perspective is we could just order the kits, I can draw the names through a random name generator, come to you, come to Chris or the Sheriff's Department, whatever, say these are the names, collect the sample with just a little test script. Or if we wanted to go through the Vine of the Road or Dr. Smith in human, but that's going, that's going to cost a little bit more. As far as insurance purposes go, we just have to adhere to our policy, which is not real stringent. So, you know, I tend to go least amount of investment possible, but that's kind of up here.
I know Eric and Dr. Smith had talked sometime back.
I went and visited with him. His opinion is to go just whole hog and have, he wanted like a baseline of every employee come to Gewin and like Greg and I talked about, for his guys or for y'all, you know, that could be a half a day for your guys to get to Gewin just to take a drug test. And I hate to make it sound like just to take a drug test, you know, but you can't just stop the world to take care of that when, I don't mind if we put it in place to give y'all a notice, not the names, but the day of, and just make sure you got your folks ready, and I can be there in the morning at your place, it's really what y'all would prefer. And we don't have to.
That sounds good, and maybe if it's good with the insurance company.
We got one option that I did with a couple of my guys, started, you know, we have nurses at the county jail, and I had them tested there. I started with my leadership, you know, chief deputy and rank. So it may be an option you may want to look at. I don't know really about the court situation, how that goes, being off-site, thing, whatever. That may be an option, or you may want to do what he's talking about. Because we have all, we have nurses, and we have the tests at the jail. I'm about to leave you out of here, if I'm saying something.
I would assume that would work for our brand, for our drug-free policy with C R S. Anything, you know, that would involve an incident, we're not going to be handling that anyway, they'll do that regardless. So, I mean, especially the new jail, pretty centrally located, so.
I was sure if you got anything you want to add, how's everything coming along?
Well, they're supposed to be putting the radio tower up this morning. I haven't been over there yet, but I have one thing I need to talk to you about. I was going to get with Scott. I talked to Alabama Power about some lighting down that side street between the jail and D H R, back at D H R. And I got a contract, sheriff can't sign contracts if it can't commission, but this is, you know, have extra lighting back there, the LED lighting, light up the whole place. But at night, I'll go back there and look, it's kind of dark all the way back there, especially to the turnaround spot. But to add it, let's see, it tells exactly what you're going to do, but monthly cost is $834.02 to add extra lighting back there in Scott's. Don't look at it up quick, I just now got it Friday, late Friday afternoon from Alabama Power. Something I'd like to see, but you can look at it, we ain't got to do it today, it's not on the agenda. Think it's something we need to do. It's awful dark back there in the back.
I got two minutes at the shop. They work.
They work good, that's what they do, you know.
They're expensive, but they work.
Yeah, very, they're higher than I thought they would be.
I know, that's easily, I couldn't believe it.
Well, it shows in there. I mean, so I was going to give it to Scott this morning, I forgot y'all had a meeting.
Something I've got three, I think you have three of them.
Three. Well, our church, church bag's done some of the ground, and it's, it helps us, that parking lot.
You can definitely see it.
You can definitely see it, there's no doubt. And like I said, I got that email Friday, and finally got the quote, and then they lived with it for about three weeks, so something with that.
He's interested in seeing what that first power bill is going to come in on the, that's what I'm waiting over the jailhouse. That's going to be kind of, that's going to be interesting to look at.
Yeah.
But, but maybe we're heating, we're cooling in closed space to the, not in closed space.
See, I don't know exactly what we're paying it, we're at now.
Too much, I guarantee you.
It's hot.
I guarantee you it'll be close to what that old jail was, because you're not heating and cooling the whole world and the, there is having to run constantly over there, just it makes a difference in the heat.
And some of our air has not been working, but I haven't said a word, but I keep praying we'll be moving in a couple of weeks, and I hope still, they promised me they'd be there today putting that tower up, so.
About what, about the biggest holdup?
Yes, it is the biggest holdup, because I can't move without the dispatchers in there. You know, I was going to try to, but there's no way, because they get everyone's going to control and access people coming in and out of jail, you know, so.
It's tomorrow when the gentleman's coming up from Selma?
Tomorrow, yes, Sheriff Selma, Dallas County called me, I sent that text to him. I was talking to him at the sheriff's conference, like I said, about two years ago, their jail was hit with a 480, and they got to run around with insurance and everything else, but the estimates that they're getting in is way higher than what. And I told them about our jail and war construction and all, so they want to come tour it, and it'd be nice to have some of y'all there if you want to, to meet their commissioners on the, I don't know if there's five commissioners in Selma, or Dallas County, so they're coming up. Sheriff said they'd leave about 9:30 in the morning, so it'd be after lunch.
Definitely, it'll be 12:30, 1:00, something like that.
Yeah, so they're coming, and Carter County's reached out too, you know, they're in the process of building, or trying to take an old T V building, convert it into a jail, but their price has been, I heard 38 million, so.
Sure.
Yeah, so they want to come tour it, so it's a nice facility, something to be proud of. I know we got to pay for it, but it's going to be really nice, and everybody's going to kind of pop it, so it'll be good.
That's a good thing. At least we didn't do it wrong. At least you won 38 million dollars.
Anybody got anything else for John? I need a motion in a second to John.
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
This is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Gewin with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Gewin and Fayette.
Hello, I'm Keith Nichols with Marion County Funeral Home. I'm here with our manager Glenda Cochran and owners Rick and Jane Chambliss. It has always been our purpose to provide the most caring and compassionate service we can at the most reasonable prices. So we feel it imperative to offer a pre-need option that will fit the needs of the people and area we serve. So why should we pre-plan? To make sure your wishes are met, provide peace of mind for you and your family, to relieve hurried and impulsive decisions at one of the most difficult times in our lives, to also relieve a great financial burden on our family. We plan for a number of things in our lives, so let's not forget one of the most important, our final arrangements. For a limited time, we're offering your choice of a $6,495 service. For a limited time, we're offering your choice of a $6,495 service or a $6,995 service. We're here because we care, so give us the opportunity to sit down and answer any questions you might have regarding pre-planning and the services we provide at Marion County Funeral Home in Hamilton, (921) 5777, and follow us on Facebook.